And then the next day, which was the 29th, we went to the Nahant Elementary School kids saluting Captain Claudia, Claudia Geltzer, who is retiring. She evidently has been there for, she shows up for three years and talks with the students there. So I said, "Well, I'll stick around for a while," and it was, it was a great time. And the, there was a, I think she was a first grader. Her name was Reagan Duanne, I think I got it right. She was acting principal, and she was a hot rock. She ran the whole show. It was really, really well done. And they were totally surprised. It was a good time. And number three, the passing of Beverly Bellevue saddens because she was my next-door neighbor and a heck of a lady. My kids, growing up, always went down there and said, "Mr. and Mrs. Bolio," because they couldn't say Bellevue, "gonna miss her." I know Richie was there tonight, too. Thank you, everyone.
I'm sorry. I just want to apologize for not being around Memorial Day. As you know, I became a grandfather, and it started that day. It didn't end until the 30th, so, but it was well worth it.
Congratulations.
So, I apologize for not, for not being there. Baby girl. Girl. Where are you? Oh, you're hooked. Yeah, she's great, so.
Thank God she's got your daughter's looks on you. I mean, she's beautiful.
She was, Mr. Chairman, she was passed around Town Hall the other day, and she, all work stopped.
Yeah. That's terrific.
She was good. She, I was just, I just, she was good.
She's something, so, I'm happy.
Well, she takes after your wife.
Oh, yeah, no question about that.
And look who's, so, look who's talking. All right. Approving the minutes of 5:17:18.
Okay. I moved at the Board of Select, we approved the minutes of 5:17:18.
Second, a discussion?
No. Discussion? Hearing and seeing none? Oh, you have discussion? All right, hold on.
The request, again, for the chapel?
Yes.
You wanna, have you, you gonna take that up under your business?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, then I'll just wait until then.
Right, right.
All right, and then, it's not in the minutes of this meeting?
No, but it's gonna be under my town administrator report, and I have a-
Tonight?
Tonight.
But it's not in last week's meeting?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Approving Ellingwood, oh, not to concerts.
That was on item number C, 4C, right here.
4C.
Cemetery easement grant. Town Council, Dan Scripper, explained that Lynn Spencer-
Yeah.
Community Preservation Committee was exploring a historical grant for the restoration of the Ellingwood Chapel, which requires a preservation restriction. Mr. Scripper said that Green Lawn Cemetery was made up of several apostles, and that apostle-containing Ellingwood Chapel could be served-
Severed.
Ah, severed, I'm sorry, from the rest of the cemetery for the purposes of the preservation restriction if the grant is awarded and if the Board so votes. Sue Snow, Chair of the Cemetery Committee, would like information on the grant so the committee can make a recommendation. She will contact Lynn Spencer.
And at that point, our town administrator said to Sue Snow to contact Lynn Spencer. I remember it like it was yesterday.
There was no vote?
That's correct.
No, no vote.
I, I'd like to put that on hold.
I, I'm gonna report on that if, you wanna do it right now, or I mean-
Oh, we could. I, I want, I want, I want this because I wanna get an understanding of this grant and then have explained because, um...
Can we cover it now?
Whatever your pleasure is, Mr. Do you wanna-
I'm just, I'm just Larry.
I can report now, or do you wanna-
State comes in with a federal grant for the cemetery, and then, um-
Yeah, all right.
We made, we, well, let me finish, Dee, relax, relax, let me finish. Now we're getting into serious. This chapel in the cemetery is sacred ground, and I just, I just feel very, we've made one mistake already with Northeastern, and I don't wanna make another mistake with this chapel. And if the state gets control of that chapel, you know, they're gonna, you know what I mean? I just, I just don't want that to happen. And I, all the insurances and everything else can happen, but if someone takes, especially the state giving us money, they, they could, they could demand certain things that be done, and I, I, we've never had a problem raising money for the cemetery or the chapel. So I'm, I'm not in favor of any grant from the state or anything else for that chapel. That's what I have to say, Mr. Chairman, and I say move, I so moved that tonight.
Move what?
On the request, we table this grant for the chapel that's being proposed.
I'll second it.
Before we vote, could we have the town administrator report to us on it?
Sure.
Well, I can come on- Do you wanna dispense of passing the minutes first? Parliamentary procedure stuff?
We could, we could take the vote, and then we could vote on the, on the minutes. What we're gonna do right after this vote is taken, we can have the minutes taken this, minutes are not approved as written.
Well-
Okay?
I, I think we vote the minutes first, Richie, because Enzo read them, and we will contact-
Yeah, but if you, let me explain.
We're not, we're not okay on anything.
Wait a minute. If you approve the minutes, you approve everything that's in that, in that body of the report. That means you approve the minutes of the meeting and everything that's in that.
That's correct.
Including what I just read.
But it does not, it would not approve any grant, that, not at all.
I understand that.
Okay.
But the, the language that is in there is very gray.
Okay, I, I, that's what happened. I don't know how to help you here.
Well, no, it's very simple. The language, the language in there is, is very gray.
If I could suggest-
And I just don't, again, the reason for it is because I have questions concerning the state giving us money for the chapel.
Wanna stroke votes, make them-
If I could, I could help you with all this if you want, but-
Strike section C?
Yeah.
For now?
You can make a motion to amend the minutes. You could do that, if that satisfies the Board. Eliminate it altogether, it's your minutes. And then if you want, either right afterwards and approve the minutes, then I can report immediately if that's what you wanna do.
That's fine.
Does that work for you?
I'll make a motion that we strike section C, cemetery easement grant out of the minutes from the 18th.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Second the motion.
My, my discussion is, could be severed. If the grant and the Board votes, so votes. There's nothing concrete in here. Nothing.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, though, satisfy the majority of the Board. I, I don't see a problem with it. I would go along this weekend and try to satisfy Richie's issues, yeah?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna wait, or do you want me to discuss this right now?
Right now, please.
Okay, absolutely. Okay. What is going on with this grant? It's being coordinated with, you know, Community Preservation Group. Is an opportunity to get a grant to do repair work on the Ellingwood Chapel. Now, the original concern that I had of the whole thing was the footprint of the grant would have incorporated the entire cemetery, which I absolutely was opposed to as the town administrator. But we worked with the assessors, and what occurred was they were able to get the footprint just immediately around the chapel only. And what would occur is if the town were to accept the grant, there would be, you'd get some money to repair the chapel, which is, you know, fine in and of itself. However, there is restrictions, the restrictions would be, as Richie indicated, and he has concerns about, would be with regard to the chapel only, not the remaining part of the cemetery, okay? Now, where it's at is, it's, the application is in. You, you can do this a couple ways. Obviously, you can articulate your concern and make a motion to reject it right now if you want, even if you haven't got it yet. There's a distinct possibility you're not gonna get it anyways, just so you'll be aware of that. You can either take a motion and instruct me not to accept it now, you can wait to see if you get it and deny it at that time, or it may not come anyways. So those are your options. If it's the desire of the Board not to take it, and I fully get you don't wanna do it, I'm, I'm fine with all that, it's just a question of process. How do you wanna handle it? And not, if that's the wishes of the Board, not to take it, it's, you can vote now, you can vote, you can wait to see if you get it, or you can deny it when it comes to you under chapter 44, section 53A. Only the Board of Selectmen can agree to accept this. So you have complete control over the whole situation.
This grant is an easement grant.
There are, um, there are easement concerns that, that restrict on what you can and cannot do in the property. You are correct, yes.
This is an easement grant.
Yes.
And I told the Chairman tonight to make sure our town council, Dan Scripper, is present from now on for these meetings, as I haven't seen his report.
He went out, wrote, when he was here for this meeting on, what was it, May 17th? He, he was here for that, you're right. He reported to you as he did. He kinda said the same thing I just said, to be honest with you. And it was kind of the sense of the Board, as I interpreted at that time, to go forward, not to get the grant, but to go forward and continue the research, and then you, so, but if you wanna kill it tonight?
No, 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 no.
No problem.
I didn't hear that at all.
Okay.
I didn't hear any vote to move forward on anything like this at all. And I, and I, and again-
Okay. Whatever the wishes the Board are, we'll do.
We made one mistake with Northeastern. I do not wanna make a mistake with the cemetery and the chapel. I do not-
Then I would suggest that you can-
Suggest we take a vote.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. You can make a motion to instruct the town administrator not to accept the grant.
Okay.
And if that's what your wish is out, that's what will be done.
I'll say, I'll also move that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it. Discussion? Well, first, talk to Richie about the town council. Is he available? 'Cause I think he's out-
He's away.
He's away.
He's away.
He's flying in Colorado.
He's in flight training school or something like that. That's correct.
So I think that, I think that we need to have him here, we need to have somebody else.
Um, I, by all means, I could bring in Copeland and Page. I was not aware, this is the first time I've heard your concerns about town council. I didn't think we needed him tonight, but if any one of the three of you thought that, I would've certainly made arrangements. I was not aware this is an issue.
Well, there's a lot going on, coming up.
Oh, yeah.
Pipe, the pipeline, the negotiations with Lynn across the harbor, things like this. We need to get on this, we need to stay on top of these things and get the legal, the legal authority.
I agree with that. They just weren't on, those agenda items weren't for tonight, that's why I didn't think it was an issue.
And the contracts, we need to go out and borrow the money, knowing that the FEMA is gonna replace it.
Yep.
Either, you know, go off alone and get, get the walls, especially to the beach and the Coast Guard beach.
I'm gonna report on that tonight, too.
And get that fixed, and we gotta, you know-
All right, but, pardon me, but I am gonna interrupt this time. We are talking about a cemetery. I see this, to see we eliminated as not being that big a deal, and I've asked Lynn Spencer to come up and speak, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lynn Spencer, 15 Tri Mountain Road. I am the Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, which is the group that initiated this grant application in consultation with various members of the Board and the Cemetery Committee. I am also on the Historical Commission. I would simply like to clarify a couple of points. Number one, the town of Nahant has been the recipient of numerous Massachusetts Preservation Projects Fund grants over the years, starting with this building, where $100,000 was awarded in 1995, and a result of that, there is a preservation restriction on this building. The Public Library has received two of these grants. The Life Saving Station, also two grants, and the Community Center, a grant as well. So there are existing preservation restrictions in effect that have been accepted by the town and the Board of Selectmen. What do these restrictions say? They say that those elements of the building that make it historically significant, meaning eligible for the National Register, will be preserved. That's all it says. Then there's a series of clarifications on what the distinction is between regular maintenance and a capital improvement. And so it's quite a clear restriction, and it's, it's in fact a good guiding document. Actually, the grants are being awarded or announced today, and it is up to the Board of Selectmen as to whether they want to accept it or not. We don't know if a grant has been awarded, but I, I believe that the Historical Commission in Boston was voting on it today. So we saw this as an important way of helping supplement town resources for the preservation of that chapel, which is a treasured building. And we had done it in part because we had received a comprehensive exterior envelope assessment that identified a number of critical elements on the chapel, as well as the wall along Nahant Road for the cemetery. We saw this as a way of supplementing and helping with budget issues for the town and as well as achieving preservation goals. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Where are these reports? I've never seen a report on the repairs for the chapel, or the wall, from Preservation Trust, or anybody else.
So this is-
Nothing's come in front of us. This thing, this, this thing showed up as a, the cemetery easement. Easement to me, and of course, the town council's not here, but easement to me, a cemetery easement grant. And, you know, I just, you know, I feel very, very, I just don't know, you know, love to take money from the state, but when they, when they, they're gonna put restrictions on that property, and I just, I'm not gonna allow it. I'm, I'm again, I'm voting against it, okay? But where are all these reports you say that the Preservation Trust has on the repairs of the wall?
I know I'm associated with the Preservation Trust, but this is not the Preservation Trust. This was a community preservation grant that was awarded to the town of Nahant last year.
No, 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 I understand, but where are these reports that you mentioned in your speech to us-
Sure.
About repairs to the chapel, the wall? I, I haven't seen anything from the Public Works, Town Administration. I haven't seen anything. Have you people seen anything like that?
No.
The Board of Selectmen's supposed to vote on this, and this pops up, and we've got no background, no, no information on this.
So I believe the town administrator, the previous town administrator, had put it out to public procurement. An architectural firm was selected with a structural engineer, and that firm did an assessment on this building, the Public Library, and the Ellingwood Chapel. The report should be with the town, the current town, town administration, and where they're-
I'll get it for you.
I'm sorry?
I'm sure.
Off the top of my head, I don't know if it's, but if it's there, I'll find it.
Those were the CPC grants for the envelopes, right?
I'm sorry?
There was a CPC grant for the three envelopes for the, for this building.
That's right, exactly. Yeah.
My, my question is, you said that it's gonna, you're gonna do the chapel and the wall?
No, it identified serious repairs-
Right.
-for the wall, as well as work on the chapel.
You can only do, you can only work on the chapel, you can't work on the wall with that grant.
This grant is only for the chapel.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it, it was very interesting that Dan Scripper, and he was very conscientious and thoughtful about this, and guided by Jerry Perry, really worked hard to sort of identify a way of, of addressing a pres, the, the ability to accept a preservation, not that you're going to, but you could have title that was clear enough to accept it, that is isolated to area immediately around the chapel, and didn't include the whole of Green Lawn Cemetery.
Now, when you say around the chapel, there's graves around that chapel, very close to that chapel.
Absolutely.
Are they involved in it?
I'd have to look at the plot plan.
I don't believe they are, no. Not in my, on the plots I saw, no.
This surrounding area, and those graves, you know-
I don't think it was.
Those, those graves are awful close to that chapel.
And you know it-
I mean, I mean, within, within eight, 10 inches. 'Cause I went up and measured that, and I looked at that, and I had, you know, and I said to myself, that, these graves are awful close. And I'm, I'm not, I'm confused, and-
Could, could I?
Again, there's no, there's no, there's no documentation. I've gotta get, I'd like to get some more information before, you know.
Mr. Chairman, if I could. We will have all the information ready for you to make a decision. Plot plans and grant requirements and restrictions, it would be presented to you if we get it, and it would be my recommendation to the Board to wait to get all that information, make an, an informed decision, certainly you can reject it, and it'd be, at that time, you'll have all these reports, you'll have all the plot plans, you'll have answers to all the questions you raised, once, if they should get it, because just because they get it, you still, by state law, have to approve it. And, and while you certainly can say, "Don't approve it tonight," but I would suggest it'd be in the best interest of the town to get all the information together and then make an informed decision.
Well, I, I still think we should vote it down because-
Okay.
Again, this, this is, it's an easement.
That's fine.
Word easement to me is just, and plus the documentation, it was just, it was, it was in here, it was out of the blue. And, you know, we don't have, you know, you talk about data, and this, you know, if the former town administrator had it, we should've, you know- Do you have a copy of that in your file? I mean-
I have an electronic copy.
No, yeah, but did you, did you submit that to, for a grant?
The report?
No, no, no. Were you responsible for submitting that for a grant?
Yes.
You were?
Yes.
So in order for-
So my committee, I chair the Community Preservation Committee, and-
Now, is this, is this Preservation Trust?
No, no, the Community Preservation Committee of the town of Nahant is what I chair.
Okay, that's what you chair.
Yeah.
Now, you submitted that, right?
Right.
Where is the submitter on that documentation? You had to submit, you, you must've submitted documentation with that.
We submitted a, we submitted a grant application, yes. We have a copy of it, yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Can you give it, give it to the town administrator, so he may, my-
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Can you dig up the other reports, too?
Absolutely.
Okay, my two cents. Why would we vote not to do anything when we don't have any of the documentation, and we haven't discussed anything with the Chair of the Cemetery Committee yet? It was left that she would get in touch with Lynn Spencer through the town administrator, if possible.
She, I can tell you that-
So I figure we get all the documentation, we look at all the, worst-case scenario, we then vote it down.
I can tell you that the Cemetery Committee knew nothing of this. I can tell you, 'cause I'm on the Cemetery Committee, so-
Well, actually, we have a letter of support from the town Cemetery Committee, Enzo.
That must be in your packet.
You can't, 'cause I'm on the Cemetery Committee. Well, who, who did it come from?
That must be in your packet.
Yes, yes.
Letter from the Cemetery Committee.
I believe so. I may be wrong. We have a letter from the Historical Commission and others. These were letters of support.
No, I never, we never, we never, I never heard it, honestly, so.
Well, yeah.
And that was the first I heard of it was last, the last, at our last meeting, to be honest with you, so. I'd like, I'd like more information on it, too, because it is a, it's a cherished building. I mean, it's, it's-
Absolutely.
You know, the whole, that whole structure up there, the, the underground tunnel there, whatever you wanna call it, next to it, and the chapel itself, and I would, I would just wouldn't want to see the state or anybody take that over, or control, control it over the town of Nahant.
I, I have to clarify, the state has preservation restrictions on this building, the library, and others.
Sure they have.
So you probably will want to look at those restrictions yourselves-
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
And see what the content of it really is. It's not an easement, it's a preservation restriction. So if that was in the language of the minutes, perhaps that one should be, should be corrected.
All right.
Okay?
Talking on the vote. Want me to call the vote, or do you wanna rescind it till we get further down the road?
Just, uh-
It's your motion.
The motion, the motion is to deny, right, currently. Now, she just, before I speak on the mo, you said the grant's already been issued.
No, no, no. The grants are actually being announced today. They were voted on by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, I believe, today. So we don't know, as, as Mr. Perry has suggested, we don't know if we've received one or not. Chances are, we haven't. There's a lot of competition for these grants. So this may be moot. On the other hand, it may be a topic that you would be brought, would be brought up at your next meeting.
You know, this thing is, I tell ya, we need, Cemetery Commission didn't know about it. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, I, I find it strange, because the base of the cemetery, the chapel, if you go out 18 inches to two feet, they're gonna have to remove graves.
But we're not talking about doing any-
Excuse me, let, let me finish.
Okay.
They're gonna have to remove graves that have been there for centuries, and people that are buried there, I don't think they wanna be moved. And that, that, I'm, I'm, I'm just-
Mr. Lombard, it's very important for me to go on the record so that the people who are listening to this on air understand this. This does not involve any change to the subterranean issue-
No, I hear ya.
-of the cemetery.
I, I gotta-
It's very important for our listeners to understand that.
We need to get council in here to rewrite. I wanna make sure it's in written form, so there's no misunderstanding on this thing. All right? Especially if all these committees haven't even seen this thing. And when you, when you hit up, you know, you, you know, the cemetery easement grant, I mean, that, that, that's, that's a strong, strong paragraph. Okay, I'm finished, I'm just, I think we should just vote no tonight, and then let them come back, and then we can always review it. If they wanna still give us the money, I mean-
All right, I call the vote.
But if I could be clear, if you're saying no on this, I just wanna be clear on this now. And whatever direction the Board wants, it's fine with me. If you're voting no, does that mean we're not accepting this grant?
No.
What does the no mean?
No means we're not, we're not applying for any grants.
They've already applied, so it's too late to do that.
It's, you, so you've applied for this grant already?
The application is in. She just told you they were voting on it today.
It was never voted for the, by the Board.
It was voted on at town meeting to do this application.
Town meeting did this, Richie.
Town meeting did it.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure the people at town meeting understood this.
I, I can assure you, no grant is going to be accepted without all the paperwork coming to the Board. You have every question answered, you have complete authority and control on this. If I thought for one minute one grave was gonna be moved, I'd be all over that and say, "No way." You still have control, there's no requirement to accept it. Again, my advice to you is, let's see what happens. If it does, if we are given that, then it comes back to us with all the paperwork. I'd give you as much paperwork as you want, and we'll brief you on everything, and then, at that point, you can still say no. Nothing happens.
Let me put it this way. I want everything frozen in time, as of tonight, okay? I, I don't want any mistakes. You're, it, this, we need to freeze this, so nothing slips through.
Okay.
want any mistakes. This, we need to freeze this, so nothing slips through. Okay, again, you're only here on a temporary basis, and we have, you know, and things could happen, and all of a sudden, you know, things have a way of getting out of hand.
As Chairman, I called the vote. I'm voting against it, just to let you know, as we don't have any documentation in front of us. I haven't heard from the Chair of the Cemetery Committee. I'm not gonna vote no against something that we don't even have yet. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I call the vote. Mr. Lombard?
I'm voting no.
Mr. Baril?
I know.
I vote against it. So...
It's no, it's three no's.
The answer's two to one.
Two to one, no.
No, no, no. I called, he voted no not to accept anything.
Yep.
And you vote along with it.
Yes.
And you voted for it?
And I voted for it.
Okay.
Two to one. I voted against not accepting.
And the reason why, I just want to see, I want to see what their proposal for...
He just voted against, it's over now.
Voted against.
There's nothing to do. There's nothing to show you, it's all over.
All right.
Did you, Mr. Chairman, did you take a motion to vote the minutes?
Hold on, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Lombard.
We're gonna have a special town meeting here very shortly. It's either gonna happen in August or September, and if this, all this documentation...
If we vote on it.
Why don't we just vote to have them give us the documentation?
Well, I, okay, can I finish? I want to finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, why don't we just wait, wait until we get all the documentation, and then we can always put it in the special town meeting.
I thought that's what we were gonna do.
So that's what I thought we were gonna do, but I...
Just for clarification.
Just get all the information.
I can do that. I can do anything you want. Quite frankly, it confuses your town administrator what you want, but you don't go to town meeting to accept a grant. There's no, the Board of Selectmen has that authority. You don't need to go to the town meeting on that.
I understand that.
Then what are we talking about?
But I want the people, the town people, they're the jury, and they need to know exactly what's transpiring with the chapel. And they need to know that and have that...
Maybe we can have a committee report, if that's what you want to do.
Well, you got a committee, you got a Cemetery Committee there. There's a Cemetery Commission, and if they don't know about it, am I right, Enzo, you've never heard about this thing?
No, I didn't.
Tell me how this...
Sush knows the...
How this got that far without the Cemetery Commission knowing about it?
Sush knows the Chairman and the committee, and she knew nothing about it. I mean, and I can tell you, I go to every meeting, and this one.
That's fine. If I understand it right now, though, there's no grant. You voted two to one no, so, and that's fine.
That's how I look at it.
It's over.
It's over.
There's nothing to do. There's no paperwork. It's done. It will not happen. It's not gonna happen. It's over.
Next item.
Public Library, Short Beach.
Did the minutes get approved?
Yes.
That was, Enzo, I just asked you to sign that for us.
Without C.
Yeah. Enzo, could you sign it for me and give it back to me, please?
They were here.
Without four C.
Yeah, I will delete that. Can I have that back, please? Thank you very much.
I guess we're on 2A.
Mr. Chairman, we have the Librarian, Sharon Hawks, who'd like to make a presentation to the board for something the library would like to do this evening.
Good evening, I'm Sharon Hawks on Nahat Road, and I'm the librarian. Nahat Public Library has a project idea for the Selectmen's approval. Oh, and by the way, congratulations, your granddaughter is gorgeous. The library would like to provide a Little Free Library, essentially a small hutch to use as a book exchange, to be installed on the path to Short Beach. It would enable beachgoers to take a free book and leave a book for others as they like. We would stock the box with books that have either been withdrawn from the collection or donated, so there's no requirement to return, there's no overdoses involved. We hope in this way to provide a library service to children and adults using the beach outside of library hours. So one of our concerns is to be able to offer as many of our library services as we can when we're not open, and to go to where the needs and interests are, instead worrying about bringing people to us. The Little Free Library is a nonprofit organization, helping to bring the concept around the world, and they've been operating since 2009. Towns closest to Nahat with book boxes include Marblehead, with five boxes, Malden, with six, and Jamaica Plain. And you can, anyone who's interested can read more about the concept at littlefreelibrary.org. The Little Free Library would be stocked from Memorial Day to Labor Day, just through the summer months, and the library would make sure that the Little Free Library is well-maintained, so we're not gonna let things go flying out of there. I have photos of the box and the pole that we're proposing to use, so happy to give that to you right now. And the friends of the library will fund the purchase, and we will work with EPW to install it. I have receivers' support for this project from the Library Board of Trustees, the Conservation Commission, and the interim town administrator. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah.
But because of the generosity of friends...
Thank you.
Because of the generosity of friends, we thought that we would go ahead and purchase Little Free Library's own construction, so that we know that it's sound, we know that it'll resist the elements, that kind of thing.
Mr. Chairman, Sharon, could you explain to the board where you're recommending to put this, which, where along Short Beach was it?
Now, I'm open to the idea. I was thinking of putting it at the path across from Spring Road. Primarily, I want to make sure that our residents have access, so I'm open if you see that a different way.
Crash from the pizza stores. There's three walks.
There's a walkway off of Short Beach from, you know...
Not the middle walk, it's the walk closest to the pizza store, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I really do. My only problem is... Kids. Kids destroying that box and throwing the books all over the beach, and you're gonna leave it up Fourth of July, and that whole scenario, I, you know, we don't have, we don't have lights to light up.
We have, you know, this is something that we're interested in, so we're committed to the idea that certainly at first, we'll be down there daily to take a look at how it's being used or misused, to make sure that it's cleaned up and taken care of. And then I think over time, we'll have a better sense of how often we need to be there, restock it, and that things. But no, I don't want anybody else to be burdened with, you know, any kind of refuse or anything that might happen to the box. That'll be the library's responsibility.
I think it's a wonderful idea. The problem is the delivery system. The delivery system, especially during the night hours, I mean, some of the youth in this town, I mean, they tear out the flags out of the golf course, and they throw them in the ditch. The tee boxes, they pick up and throw away. This is all, you know, ten-thirty, midnight, one o'clock in the morning. Police can't be everywhere to watch it. I'm just afraid of your library box would get destroyed.
It might. It's, you know...
I mean, it's only $275.
Yeah, it's a liability that we'll take on, yeah. But, yeah, we're dedicated to keep an eye on it and figure out how, you know, how it's being used. Other communities don't seem to have a particular problem with it. By putting it slightly away, we know as librarians, if you put a book drop right on the thoroughfare, right on the sidewalk, people will put a pizza box in it. So we know that if you put it a few steps beyond, that, you know, that people have to make the trip to go to the box. They're not throwing trash in, they're not trashing the box.
Well, I would move it away, closer to the sidewalk, and there's a shower unit down there, move it away from that. On the right-hand side, as you face the ocean, the shower unit's on the left. I would put the box on the right, okay, on the sidewalk, more on the sidewalk next to it.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
So that, and then, I'm not sure if we can get a light shining on the box. That would prevent people from disturbing that.
I would make it removable, too.
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking of screwing it to the base, so that we can take it out on the off-season, yeah. I agree with you.
In case we have a big storm, that'll just float away.
Yep, yep.
Well, yeah, we could build, you know, we build a cement slab, like we do for the memorial benches, and we stick it in that, bolt it down, so they can't...
Yeah. I discussed it...
Just an idea.
When I discussed it with the Conservation Commission, they asked me if I would entertain the idea of just putting it as a pole in the ground and seeing if that works without concrete footing. You understand, they have environmental concern. And so I said, "We're willing to try it."
If I may.
Sure.
I would ask, did you ask Conservation Commission where you should put it? If they could help you find a place, because they have to be involved in an awful lot, from July 1st on, if not now.
Yep, pretty much exactly this.
As far as bolting and cement blocks, absolutely not. That, you know, and the tar was put down by Short Beach, by Coast Guard, somebody put tar there, it shouldn't have been put there. You know, there's a lot that has been done, that can't be done, so I would check with them.
Right, yes, thank you.
Honestly, because then you won't have to listen to...
Yeah, not a problem. We have had conversation on that.
Thank you, Sharon. So we took, okay, this?
I have a question. Sharon, I love the idea, but I'm just wondering the dimensions of the box, I didn't get to see. I appreciate you not putting anything permanent into the doom because of our flooding situation.
Sure. Box itself is about 21 inches wide, 18 inches tall, 17 inches deep. So, you know, we're figuring, you know, between a dozen and 20 books. We're thinking in terms of, you know, some skinny children's books, some mass-market paperback-type things, you know, things you can easily carry with you to read on the beach.
So what we are looking for, gentlemen, is to okay this?
We would like, I would like to see a vote of the board, whether you want to support it. It's up to your board, of course, but...
Those in favor of Library Post with Tupper signify by saying aye.
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 And I think it's a good idea.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
You know, the EPW will put it in, right, Sharon?
Yes, yes.
DPW will put it in?
Yes.
Yeah, because they'll have to call DigSafe. There's an awful lot of underground wires there.
Yeah. Yeah, they have a couple of very good gentlemen. They actually did the installation for us over in the park for the story walk, did an excellent job, really pleased with it. So, yeah, I'd be happy to call on them again for that.
Thank you, Sharon. Citizens Forum, people who wish to discuss, please state your name.
Jennifer McCarthy, 19 Range Road. I'm just wondering if there's an update about the slip at the wharf. My husband was putting his trailer in and actually pulling his boat out, and there was damage done to it because it was a very low tide, and so he had to go all the way to the end. And at the very end, there are the cement or granite stones that are on one side sticking up at least a good foot. On the other side, they're probably about four or five inches. And so I'm just wondering what the plans are for that, and in the meantime, maybe the town wants to post, you know, use it at your own risk or something, so that they're not liable for damage to people's trailers and boats.
Town Administrator?
I was gonna have to, as part of my report, I can, with your permission, do that now? Is that what you'd like? Okay. What has occurred is the following. Actually, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen was with me on the conference call. We have withheld payment, the remaining payment to the contractor until we get some satisfaction. I have been working with Vicky Masson, who's a contractor, engineer for the town, with the absence of a public works director, and I have engaged Copeland and Page to represent the town, to try to protect the position of the town with regard to the contract. Those negotiations are going on as we speak. We have a punch list of some of the things you just articulated that I can tell you I'm not happy about, and I've been very aggressive to try to fix all of that. We are right in the middle of it as we speak. I don't have a final resolution. I can tell you, obviously, we'll probably win some stuff, we'll lose some stuff. All this, my first week here was the last week of the contract being done, so I just inherited what occurred. But I, the board does know, I've briefed them individually, and I was gonna say that publicly tonight, that we are very much addressing and being very aggressive about that boat ramp.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why don't we have a marine engineer working on this?
Because the town engaged, long before I got here, Unified and Mr. Charles as an engineering forum. You'd have to ask the prior town administrator that question. I didn't, had nothing to do with this.
No, no, why don't we have, why don't we have one now, looking at it? I wanted Unified fired a year ago, and I didn't want them to come back.
Well, again...
And I'll go on record as saying that.
That's fine.
What I'm saying is, why aren't we using a marine engineer now? Somebody that knows what they're doing down there to correct the problem. I mean, it looks pretty simple to me. They could put another piece of, another, they could just get their machine down there, dig it out, and put another piece of precast down there that would go under the sand, that would remedy it. Instead, they put granite blocks there. I don't understand that. I don't understand how they, and I said this a year ago, how they can't put up a copper dam when they did it 100 years ago. What was the difference? Is the technology better worse now than it was back then? I mean, they did it then. I don't understand how this happened. I really don't. And I'm not saying, this is not your fault, Jerry. I'm not blaming you. What I'm saying is, we need to get a marine engineer down there to remedy this. Somebody that knows what they're doing. Obviously, Charles Engineering didn't know what they were doing, and obviously, the people, the contractor, who I said should be fired a year ago, didn't know what they were doing. And this is what we wound up with.
But in defense of that, we are moving forward.
Well, this is the, I haven't heard anything about it.
Going back, I understand all that, but we're trying to move forward. We've...
So when are we gonna let the Board of Selectmen know about it?
Two lawyers to go after it. You've been advised every single move on what's happening.
No, I have not.
Yes, you have.
No, I have not. I disagree. I have, this is the first I've heard of the wharf in over two months.
That's outright untrue.
It's simply not true.
Everything that has been going on with Mr. Perry and myself has been relayed to you and to, and shame on you for bringing that up.
I'm just telling you.
I'm telling you, shame on you.
I know nothing about the wharf. Richie, do you know anything about the wharf? Have you been notified about it?
I didn't know what was going on down there. In fact, I was at a function in town, and someone, two people approached me and sat down with me and asked me about it. And then I said, you know, they said under those things they put down there is wood. They put wood down there. I don't know how that, I didn't see that. But I think, in order to get the sheets in there, they initially ran into ledge. So what happened is they backed off of that. They should have gone deeper where the sand was to prevent the water and repour the last 12 feet, 16 feet. That's the way I look, but I'm not an engineer. And my next question is, how much damage has been done to this boat and trailer? And have we got a farm for them to fill out and the repairs, and we need to go after the contractor for the damage to these boats of being damaged? This is the second boat I've heard that was being put in and had damage. I think what we need to do is get everybody sitting down, and I'm glad you haven't paid anybody. That's great, you know.
Ready to report when I'm allowed to.
But I think, you know, that, when I was down there, I noticed a young lady measuring the wall going down on the left side. It needs to be, what do you call, gunite, because the holes in that wall on the left side of the ramp going down into the ocean, and then around the corner, which is underneath the actual wharf, there's all kinds of pockets in there that we need to, we need to fill that with concrete. And we're gonna lose the wharf, because those beams are gonna be, you know, that's gonna be next. But I thought that was supposed to be done, and that was assured me when I brought that up, the contract, about pointing up those seawalls on the left. They pointed the one on the right along the parking lot. That come out pretty good, but they never pointed the walls up on the left and going around. So I, I mean, these things, I mean, we're trying to get this thing right. And the problem, of course, we ran into, and I blame, I blame myself. People didn't want that thing done. First, it was the, couldn't get it done during the summertime, didn't want that, and then they went, so we're pouring concrete during the winter, which is pouring concrete and below freezing. You gotta add any freeze to the cement, and I think that's got a lot to do with it, too. But I think we need to stop payment, get our, Enzo's got a good idea, a marine engineer in there, and hire him and figure it out exactly. Give him all the paperwork, say, "This is what we need to do". I mean, I, we're, you know, because I imagine that contractor's gonna sue us, gonna, just about sue us for payment. Has that happened?
Yes.
I didn't know that happened yet.
Trying to report tonight.
Okay.
I'm doing my best. I know you're all, a lot of conversation. I'm trying to report.
I think we need to get either go weekly meetings, so we can get caught up in this stuff. This is important, and I think we need, you know, I know the summer schedule's going in, but it seems like we're missing, we're missing parts of this thing. And I'm not sure exactly, you know, so...
Okay, Town Administrator, report, Mr. Perry, please.
Just one more minute. Can I get a report from Copeland and Page on the wharf, what's been done, please?
Nothing has been done yet. They're negotiating.
You just said you've engaged them, and I was just pretty much called a liar. You just said you've engaged them, and I, I was just pretty much called a liar, that I, I know nothing of this stuff. I haven't heard anything, Jerry. So, and I need to know this stuff, because I, I need to know what's going on with the wharf. Everything. In a written report, and verbal also.
Actually, I said untruths.
Well, that's the same thing, too, so...
I mean, you, you, Mr. Perry goes down and sees you every single day, and he doesn't talk about this?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
He doesn't see me every day.
And you went in to see Mr. Perry last Friday, and he didn't talk to you about this, Mr. Lombard.
I'm sorry?
Oh.
I saw Mr. Perry?
Yeah, you went in to see Mr. Perry.
No, it is, it is home. I briefed him on a bunch of things.
At his home, sorry.
Yeah, I, he, I remember him telling me he stopped.
I just, I just wanna know. That's all that's going on.
I remember he, he stopped at the house and, and gave me an update. I remember him telling me we've stopped payment on the contract, and I knew that.
That's the only thing I've heard.
I, I, I heard that. And then, and the engineers, we're gonna go back and, I'm gonna take a look at this and see what the solution is gonna be. And that's, that's all I heard. I mean, that was the update you gave me on the wharf. Am I correct?
My recollection, I gave you more than that, but whatever you remember, you remember.
Well, tell me what else you gave me. I mean, I...
My recollection is I briefed you all, but if I did a poor job of communicating that, that's my bad.
No, no, don't, 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 this, this is, don't, please, don't take a poor job. You didn't, you didn't do anything wrong, okay?
I don't think I did, quite frankly, no.
It's just, come on. We're just trying, you know, we're, we're four guys trying to get it straight and get it right. That's all we're trying to do here.
All three of us have to know about it.
Yeah, and just...
Not just one or two, or three, no.
We just need it, we, we just need to get it, get it straight, because eventually, that end of the pier, that thing is gonna let loose, and then we're gonna be in bigger trouble. And then we're gonna have to shut down the wharf totally until we fix it. And that's gonna be a problem, because no one can use the wharf until we fix it.
Okay. My meeting, town administrator report. Enough. Please go on, sir. No, there's no excuse me. I, I'm calling my meeting now. We're moving on. I've heard enough of, from both sides. You've been updated. Evidently, you didn't know. So, we're gonna move on, so we can now be updated. Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. Make your report, please.
Okay. Copeland and Page has been engaged to negotiate with Charles Engineering, who has worked with an environmental engineer within Charles, because the town has engaged this long before I got here. If we're gonna go out and hire somebody else, if that's what you're telling me to do, I need a funding source, because we don't have the money within the contract to do that. So, I've been trying to stay within budget, which I feel is my statutory responsibility. I've been trying to utilize what has been agreed upon by this board prior to my tenure. We have been, I have been very strict and aggressive to address all the things you've just articulated. I can't tell you everything, and if you wanna go into executive session, that would be a way to do it, because there's potential litigation, and I've gotta protect the town. So, all I wanna tell you tonight is, we are involved with Copeland and Page. I've worked with Unified, and I've worked with Vicky Masson. We are working to try to correct the problems that are down there. And it is my professional opinion, to say anything more than that could jeopardize our legal position with the town, and I'm more than happy to put a meeting in executive session, so we can further brief you. And I'll bring in lawyers. I'll bring in anybody you want, and you will be fully involved in everything you want to do. But it's your decision. Do you want me to post a meeting, bring lawyers? And, and when would you like to do this? Just tell me the date, and I'll set it up.
It's up to the chairman, really. It's not up to us. I mean, you should...
Whatever you want. I, I serve at your pleasure, and I wanna make sure you get everything you're asking for. If you feel you're not getting it, I wanna make sure you get it. And, and just tell me how you wanna do it, and it'll get done.
Can I talk? Excuse me. Can I talk?
Oh, sure.
Yes. You answer your question? Yes.
Done.
I'd get all the lawyers, all the legal. I'd have an executive session, and we need a game plan, exactly what we're doing down there. And then, you're saying you don't have money, okay? Well, if this is a legal mess, well, we're gonna have to borrow the money somehow to finish this project and get it right. You know, we just can't let it go, because the end result is gonna be, it's gonna be, you're not gonna have a pier. And it's gonna be shut down. And the only way to fix it is to shut it down. I mean, I, I hate to say that, and, and, you know, we're gonna tie it up, because we did it last year, and we, we just filed up. We should have never, ever, we should allow those, that company come in and, and, you know. People are gonna have to use other facilities until we get this thing fixed. Because if we don't, we're just gonna, we're digging ourselves a, digging deeper hole, and we'll need more money than God.
Well, let's have an executive session meeting. Let's talk about it.
Continue, Mr. Perry.
I'm done.
Okay.
So, we can, why don't you have an executive session meeting?
Yeah, why don't you get people together when they can make the meeting, and then tell us?
Absolutely.
How's that sound?
Perfect.
All right.
FY, fee schedules for review only. So, you have them in your packets?
Yes, you do.
Members of the board, I bring your attention, the fee schedules. It's an event. This is for review only, unless you wanna vote. That's your prerogative. The fees are there for your consideration and review. What I'd probably bring to your attention, for the most part, is, Paige, bear with me, I'll get there in a minute. Wanna talk about the water and sewer rates? I'm trying to find them. Here we go. I'm sorry, page seven, please.
Is, is, was there a problem with the water bills?
Yes, not with the bills. Yes, there was, but we got it resolved.
Okay.
That's not what I'm talking about now, though.
Just go on, please.
Thank you. The fees, as I understood, are pretty much the same of prior years, with the exception of the water and sewer rates. What is occurring and what we're observing within the community is a dramatic amount of the conservation consumption. We've seen almost a 10% cut in consumption within the past year. Some people argue that's a good thing. You know, people with their homes are doing a better job with, you know, putting water spigots. I'm not an expert in the area, but the consumption is down 9.5%, or something along those lines. But what happens is, is the consumption goes down, we still have to raise the same amount of money to pay our bills. So, that means, unfortunately, the rates have gotta go up in order to have a balanced budget. So, what you'll see on the top of page seven is new water rates for FY19 being proposed. In order to balance the budget, the water rate will go up to $8.86 per cubic foot, and the sewer rate will go up $8.96 per cubic foot for a 9.7% increase. We need to raise the rates to that level in order to make sure we can get a tax rate approved this fall. So, again, we don't, you know, no one's expecting you to approve this tonight, and publicly, that's probably the biggest thing with all the rates. By all means, feel free to call me about any other thing, or any briefing I can give you. You know, I will meet with you at your convenience. But that's probably the most important thing I bring to the attention of the board this evening.
Everyone all set with reviewing it?
Yeah, I, I have some questions concerned.
The fee schedule?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we, we appropriate $175,000 for the lower Foxell in Castle Road with the new pump. I don't think we have sufficient funds for that project. We need to dig out the, the ditch from Wad Road all the way to Keller Greens. That has to be dug out, and that's gonna cost, without, aside the pump for a minute, I, I, I'm not sure if you're gonna estimate it's in that pump. Stick the new pump at the end of, at the end of Foxell and Castle Road? Have we got any bids on that yet?
I haven't even put it out yet.
You haven't put it out yet?
No. I'm trying to coordinate a DPW superintendent to help me on that. No, the answer is no. We have not put out a bid on any of the approved bonded articles yet. No, and I would say to you, given my schedule, given the requirements necessary, that that won't get done till we get a superintendent of public works in. But we plan on getting it done this summer. Uh, getting the bids out, I mean, this summer. I'm working on that, yes.
I just saw that project, and I saw $175,000. I, I, I just, I just don't think it's sufficient funds.
Coughlin, Coughlin Engineers seems to feel it is, but, you know, I can't, I don't know how to respond to that.
I wanna make sure that we do 100% job down there. We promise those people.
Yes, we are, and I'm committed to it, too.
I wanna make sure that we, we're not coming up short, and, because a mistake down there means more flooding.
I thought, I thought we were under fees, but I, I got it.
All right.
I think there's a, let me put it this way. The engineers are telling us it's enough money. I am not an engineer. I can only tell you what I've been informed. That's what we, we worked on that when we put the town meeting warrant together. We sat with Coughlin. That's what they told us. That's what we did. I don't, I don't even know what else to say to you, other than that's what the engineers tell us.
A meeting ago, I asked you to put an action item again.
And we sent that to you.
And that action item for the prior town meetings?
Yeah, right, right.
I haven't seen that.
We forwarded to all three of you, action items for the prior town meeting. That was who I saw that, yeah.
Town meetings, and then...
Prior one, yeah. Well, then, we haven't done anything for the new one, because we haven't started the fiscal year yet.
Well, no, no, I, no, I understand, but anything we voted in this past town meeting, like the 175, I mean, anything...
Oh, yeah, down the road when we get, oh, yeah, yeah. But we have to get going on July 1st to start doing action items to, you know, we're not, we're not on it July 1st yet.
No, but prior town meetings, how do we stand? Pretty good?
Well, the report that was forwarded to electronically indicated we were pretty good, yes.
Somebody, huh?
I don't know how to, I, I know, I saw that. I know for sure that went.
It might have, it might have. I'm having a problem with my computer, so...
Okay.
I would make sure, you know, the ladies in the office, they call me.
Okay.
Put a copy somewhere.
You want a hard copy?
Yeah, I, I would prefer...
Done. Done?
All right, that's all.
4B, FY19 appointments for review and vote. We've had this since...
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that it's the wishes of the board to review this and come back. That's fine. I just wanna know what you wanna do. Thank you very much.
Unless you guys wanna vote.
What's that? Do you have any changes?
Or ace.
As I just articulated, the water and sewer rates.
Water and sewer, is that the only change?
That's the only change. I'm aware, yes.
I have no problem voting that.
Do we, um, should we look at everybody else's fees? I mean...
Again, that's why you're, you're, you know, we're giving you now, I'm not, this is your choice. I do need a vote by the end of the fiscal year to go forward. So, you, we did it tonight for your review, and we could bring it up again two weeks from now, and I can answer any questions you have, or review anything you wish.
Are you happy with the fees?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
The biggest one I'm concerned about is the water and sewer rates. That's why I talked about it. I'm comfortable with, that's my, we spent some time on that. That took some time because of the drop of the consumptions.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fee schedule as follows.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion. So, neither of you wanna review this?
No, we've already reviewed it, and we got the recommendation of the town administrator only to raise the water and sewer rates. And I, he gave justification for it. I have no problem. So, and no other fee is being changed, correct?
I wanna be clear. It's my understanding nothing's being changed, but it's possible. I don't believe so.
No, no, it could be...
I wanna be clear on that. It's, there's an awful lot of fees in there.
Well, we'll vote, we'll vote.
I believe it's okay.
We'll vote to approve it tonight, and if he needs to come back to us...
I can come back.
You can come back.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
I move the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
4B, FY19 appointments for review and vote. We've had this since my first meeting in May, so we've had enough time to review. I'd like to see a vote on this.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the FY19 appointments, not for review, we've already reviewed them, for a vote.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Declare DPW vehicle lift surplus.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, we, we have an old piece of equipment, and by state law, we need to surplus it. By a vote of the board of selectmen, I would recommend the selectmen vote to surplus the property.
Okay.
So, move.
Okay, I move the board of selectmen vote to declare surplus DPW 2004 vehicle lift model PS012-13, serial number 0402, FNKNB-002.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous vote. Approve Matthew Vedetta Call Firefighter.
Mr. Chairman, the reason this is on there, though, you did approve it. We, we weren't quite sure what the board was going to do tonight. You did approve him in your whole list of things, but we weren't sure, the staff nor I were sure whether you were gonna approve the appointments. The reason Mr. Vedetta was in there is the academy that he needs to go to starts Monday.
Oh, okay.
So, we had to make sure of it. Mr. Vedetta is a gentleman, and we're gonna talk a little bit about the Call Firefighter fees tonight. The chief has been extremely challenged to try to get anyone to take this job in any capacity, whether it be in town. We've worked hard in-house to try to get in the hot residence. It's really important to get in the hot residence as a form of Call Firefighter. I know how important it is if something's going on at 3:00 in the morning. It's better to be in town than out of town. But the chief is really struggling to get anybody to apply for the job. I will publicly say, and would encourage any Nahat resident who may be interested in trying to become a Call Firefighter, we would certainly encourage them to reach out to Chief Feinberg. We would hopefully, you know, certainly, I'm encouraging the Nahat residents to do that. But having said that to the board, it would be, you know, even though you already did technically vote for the appointments, we weren't sure of that. But this is Mr. Vedetta, is, lives over in Swambskett. He has the recommendation of the chief. He's willing to go to the academy. I think it serves the best interest of the town in Nahat, and therefore, I would recommend that, even though he did it, let's vote it again and confirm Mr. Vedetta, so we can get him off to the academy Monday morning.
Okay, I move the board of selectmen vote to approve Matthew Vedetta Call Firefighter upon the recommendation of Chief Michael Feinberg.
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none.
Wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
What's gonna be his, his date? The date?
Date for what?
For your appointment as of tonight?
As of tonight, yes.
And that will be his status going forward?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's all I wanna know.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous vote. Call firefighter pay scale to approve.
Mr. Chairman, if I could report to the board. It is my understanding and discussions with the chief, that it's been almost 20 years since we've upgraded the hourly rate for firefighters. The chief has done a careful review of what goes on in other communities with Call Firefighters. I can report to you that today, the Call, a Fire, a Call Firefighter currently makes either $16.22 an hour, or depending on if they've been on the job for a little bit longer, they're given $17.50 an hour. And it's been at the discretion, evidently, of this chief and prior chiefs for decades, a long time. The chief is trying to upgrade his, he's cognizant of the problems of trying to get individuals to come or be appointed, and, and the hope and wishes, and they've certainly heard the wishes of this board, and we're hoping, we don't, can't guarantee anything, that with this upgrade of, of hourly rate, the hope is that maybe we can encourage more Nahat residents to come forward and serve the town as a Call Firefighter. As you can see on the spreadsheet before you in your packet, he's broken out as to firefighters, certain longevity with people that have been around for a while, EMT status, and then EMT status and longevity. I can inform you that the chief has it within his budget to handle these salary increases for the Call Firefighters. I've spent some time with the chief on this matter. It is my recommendation to the board that you vote to approve these hourly upgrades for the Call Firefighters.
Okay, I move the board of selectmen vote to approve the Call Firefighter pay scale, as presented by Chief Feinberg.
I'll second the motion. Discussion.
Discussion.
Is this budgeted?
Yes. It's in the budget. It'll be effective July 1st for next fiscal year. The answer is yes.
So, it's in his budget for the town meeting?
He can, yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure he's covered, because that...
He's covered. The answer is yes.
Is there a fund transfer?
Nope, not for this. I took care of that personally.
I don't see a letter in here from the regular fireman union recommending, recommending this.
I didn't think it was necessary. I can assure you that they're in full support of it.
I have no problem. I just wanna make sure that they're, they're, they're okay with this.
I, it's my understanding they're okay with it, yes. If, I have definitely not heard anything to the negative.
Have they seen all this?
I believe they have. I personally have not shown it to them. But it's my understanding the chief, he has constant dialogue.
I have no problem. I have no problem with the salary. I have no problem, I have no problem with the salary increase for the, for the call.
Call firemen, that's it, yes.
But I want to make sure, would you, I, I rather, I can vote it in, but I want to make sure.
I will.
Regular firemen have a copy of this.
Absolutely.
And they're going along, I don't know what, what's a union, I see, I, I don't.
They, the, it's my understanding the Call Firemen are not unionized.
No, 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 but what's, you didn't, you guys have a tendency, unless I'm real slow, what's the union firefighter EMT make per hour?
I don't have that tonight. I am pretty, I'm very confident it's a lot more than this.
No, no, without, I, I don't mean the overtime, I just.
I'm talking straight time.
Just straight, yeah.
It's more than this.
More than this?
Oh, yes. But I'm not sure, I haven't got that figured, I didn't know that that was something.
Well, the president of the union could just write a quick note.
Well, what I could do.
Well, I'll, I'll vote for it tonight, but I just like to see.
With your permission, I will meet with the union.
Yeah, just, no, you don't have to meet with them, just, just call down there.
I'll call down there, I'll communicate with them.
Just get whoever, who's the, who's the chairman of the, who's the, uh, union president?
Mr. Antrim.
Give him a call and ask him.
I'll talk to him, okay.
Run around at meetings, crying.
I will take care of it.
That's all. I so move the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve event request Women's Club Holiday Fair 11/24/18, 9 to 3, Town Hall.
I move the board of selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Women's Club Holiday Fair 11/24/18 from 9 to 3, uh, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Town Hall.
I second the motion.
Discussion? Hearing and seeing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote? Approve one-day liquor license for NVA flag retirement ceremony, June 15th, NLSS.
Well, it's already passed the 15th, ain't it, Mary?
I move the board of selectmen vote to approve one-day liquor license, alcohol license, liquor license for the, uh, NVA flag retirement ceremony, uh, 6:15:18 at the.
It's two days from now, Richie.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing and seeing none, those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote? One-day liquor license, NVA flag, oh, yeah, sorry. Approve library family concert, 8/1/18, 7:00 PM, Town Hall.
I move the board of selectmen vote to approve the event request for library family concert, 8/1/18, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote? Update on activities?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's my, uh, report to the board.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Summer BOS meeting schedule, 6:27 and 7:11.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think you want me to update you on those?
Oh, yeah.
Do that first, then maybe go to the summer schedule?
Oh, I thought you were done updating us.
I wish I was.
Okay, me too.
But I do have other things to report on, okay? Uh, besides the things, some of the things I reported on, I planned on reporting on earlier, but I'll skip those now, because they've been reported. Um, Tudor Beach is Mr. Lombard talked about, uh, it's got to be a very complicated matter because it involved not only state procurement laws, but federal procurement laws. We have worked with our engineers and Cofflin, uh, Cofflin Associates. The bids are out, I think it's tomorrow or a week from tomorrow, I forget. The bids are coming in very shortly to repair and fix Tudor Beach. Um, it's just been one of those things trying to get to it, so that is in the queue. We hope to get going very shortly on that, okay? I can report to you that we have four summer DPW, uh, students, if you will, working down at the Public Works Barn. They're doing well, and, and we have enough for two more positions, starting July 1st with the budget, and we'll hopefully get a few more people on board with that. Um, the bikes around the town, uh, the Ant Bikes, they're called, the Ant Bike Company. Um, I contacted and had a conference call with the owner of the Ant Bike Company. I got, that's the green bikes you may be seeing a little bit around town. I have reviewed with the, uh, police chief and reviewed, uh, the bylaws. There is a, in, under the police bylaws, um, companies can't leave merchandise on public ways. So as such, these Ant Bikes, if they are left on public ways, sidewalks, beaches, whatever they may be, which I'm sure some of you have seen, and as you well know, I believe we've gotten some complaints from various residents about this. Um, what we're doing is the gentleman from the Ant Bike Company has informed me he'll remove them within 24 hours. That's what he's telling me. But I have instructed the Public Works to be picking them up if they're not. So we will be cleaning these up, but I, I can't discard them, I can't sell them, uh, because we know who the ownerships are, but we're bringing them under lock and key down the Public Works Barn. So the goal here is to make sure they're not out within the community, especially with the summer months coming. I also report to you that there is another company, which I have not reached yet, I'm trying to track them down. They're yellow bikes, uh, same concept. I haven't seen one in town, I did see one down Dunkin' Donuts, but, uh, I'm going to do the same exercise with them, too. So the bottom line to it for the residents, and I know some of the board have opined, we will be cleaning these up. We will not have them, uh, discarded on sidewalks, property, things of that nature. So we've taken care of that. I also want to report, we had, uh, the cameras down the compost station have been repaired. Uh, we had some problems with it, we had, we didn't allow them to come over and take care of that, so to make sure we don't have, hopefully, illegal dumping, at least to the best of our ability, down there with that as well. Um, we, I reported before, uh, the electrical line for irrigation down the golf course has been completed. They ran a line from the golf barn down to the second tee box, so that the irrigation systems for the greens and everything else is working properly. Uh, we, we fixed that, it's done, and I think, uh, the golf course is happy with that. Um, I have, uh, been reached out by the Coast Guard Housing Committee. Uh, they needed, uh, surveying done down there to properly make their decisions as to what to recommend to the town. Um, and we've gone out to bid, and we will be doing surveying to see what the lots look like, to see what the options out of the town. Hopefully, we'll have a report in the next couple of months, and, and something to discuss for them to come up with recommendations, so it will help facilitate with them. Enzo and I talked a little bit about that, and he encouraged, and I think it's a wise decision to do that, so, uh, and, uh, we're doing an outfit called Hancock is, uh, the surveying is the people we're working with, who's been recommended to do that.
How did you talk with Enzo about it?
Mr. Chairman, be nice.
All right, I'll be nice.
Let's be nice.
The, uh, both Coast Guard Housing?
Yes, I, I talked to all three.
I happen to be here.
Yeah, I, I talked to all three of you, I talked to all three of you as much as I humanly can, again, within my 20 hours a week.
They just wanted a survey, I guess.
Yeah, we, we got it done, it's done, it's going to get done.
Can I just mention something about the Ant Bikes?
Yes.
Why, why don't we put up bike racks to remedy, I mean, they're all over the place, even kids throw their bikes all over the place. I mean, to remedy it, why don't we have a bike rack at East Point?
I can answer that question. Um, in my opinion, that's not a good idea, and the reason being, these people just leave it where they leave it. They don't go to a bike rack everywhere, they're not going to go half a mile out of their way to, unless they have bike racks every 20 yards. This business model is built off of these phones where they just tag onto it. And then they just literally leave it wherever they want. The bike, how are we going to get them to go to bike racks?
I'm just, I'm just thinking.
And then they have to pay for bike racks, I don't think they're going to use it all.
I noticed some of them up East Point the other day.
Yep.
You know, chained to the, uh, to the, to the.
In that, yeah.
They were down on the beach. I mean, it makes more sense, instead of having them all over the sidewalk.
We're going to pick them up.
There's one right outside, right now.
Well, I didn't know that, but, um, I thought we caught that one, but I don't think the bike rack, in my opinion, if you want bike racks, we'll put them out there, but I don't think that's the answer. These people are not going to take them to a bike rack, they're going to just dump it where they're going to dump it, from my experience. I see them all over Lynn Shore, there are bike racks on Lynn Shore Drive, and they're not putting them in the bike racks in Lynn Shore Drive. They're just leaving them wherever they leave them, they don't care.
I mean, encouragement sometimes is, is the way to go, but.
In any event, um, we will be getting them off the streets and sidewalks.
Aye.
Yeah.
The yellow bikes?
Yeah, I'm working on that, too.
No, 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 I know you are.
Lynn's already accepted them, and if more, if more come, I mean, I think we should have some kind of a, a system where we can, where they can at least be decent enough to.
Well, it's a vendor.
It's the vendor, I mean.
Vendor, and we, there's a bylaw against vendors selling in town. Am I right?
Well, it's about, no, leaving, leaving merchandise, yeah.
We have no hot dog stands on Short Beach, Tudor Beach, and, uh, people with balloons for the parade, we don't allow them. And this is a very, some of these, these are vendors.
Yes, correct.
And, uh, yellow bikes are from Orient Heights.
Oh, yeah?
I thought they were from Lynn, but I don't know.
No, East Boston.
Okay.
The green ones are from Swambskett, Milehead. But I think you're just asking for trouble with these bikes. I mean, it's just, it's just going to.
We're going to get rid of them.
Not only, you, you have the green ones, and then the yellow ones, and then the red ones, they'll be, you know what I mean? They'll be coming from all over. And, uh, I, I don't think we should allow, because it'll just, uh, it's just going to complicate, um, things.
I think we got it, we're going to get rid of them.
Well, the problem is, a lot of people don't realize, we don't have any lifeguards on these beaches. You know, and people coming in, and a lot of them, they can't swim.
Yeah.
I'll be honest with you, you know, the people taking the bikes over here, and, you know, go to the beach, and, um, go up 50 steps up to, uh, East, East, you know, East Point, and jump off Castle Rock with the other kids, and they're just, you know, it's very dangerous. And I see some bikes up there, too.
Mm-hmm, we're picking them up.
Yep. That's a great idea, I think, Jerry, that's.
Thank you.
I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
That's, that's perfect.
Moving on.
I think, that's my opinion.
Okay. Uh, moving on, Mr. Chairman, we are almost finished negotiations on the mutually dispatched contract with City of Lynn, uh, with the police and fire. Um, uh, town council's reviewing it as we speak, and I think we'll be signing off on that very shortly, so. It's a 0.88, as I recall, 0% for 19, so it's a flat fee for 19, and then 20 is 8%, and 21 is 8%. So it's about a $4,000, $5,000 a year increase, it's in that vicinity, so, um, it's still a good cost benefit, uh, for the town, in my opinion, anyway, so. Um, and finally, um, on Fort Rockman, the soil testing up there has been done, um, uh, there's no real major problems were found up there. We're getting a quote to, uh, look at, uh, certain closeouts with DEP, and I think we'll have that resolved shortly, so, uh, that's looking good as well. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator.
Old business?
Uh, may I? So we've been accepted into the MVP program, um, and, you know, I can read the letter from, uh, Dear Mr. Burrow, congratulations, I am pleased to notify you that the town of Nahat has been awarded a municipal vulnerability preparedness program grant in the amount of $15,000 to complete a community resiliency planning process. And that's what this is about, planning, um, that will examine the vulnerability and strengths of your community and identify priority actions to build resilience as the climate changes. I want to thank you for your commitment to building capacity in your community and working to ensure residents have the resources they need to deal with challenges ahead. We want to commend your outstanding application in the year two of our grant program and look forward in partnering with you on this important issue. We enclosed our important documents from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, um, from Katie, uh, Theorites, and signed by, uh, Governor Charles Baker and Lieutenant Governor, um, Karen Polito. So we're having a committee meeting tomorrow night, and let me just explain a couple of things about this. This might be, work out perfectly for, uh, for Fox Hill Road, Richie, you know, the 175,000. This is a planning grant, and we're right in line with the rest of the communities of our size, 15,000. Lynn got 40, uh, Worcester got 45, you know, depending on your size. So, I'm very pleased with the committee, we did a great job getting it, getting it done, and essentially, what we're going to do is we're going to have, um, we're going to hire probably, uh, a company, we have to hire a company to come in as MVP certified, to go over planning of drainage, disdrainage, uh, you know, uh, Fox Hill Road. And it's, it's a planning grant for us to, to look at all the, uh, sea walls, where we, uh, our vulnerable spots are, how we can, you know, be more resilient, and, uh, we'll be eligible for $5 million worth of grants coming up, um, in the, uh, in the future to do these, these projects. And some of this, the, the planning grant will have, Jerry, you'll be there, um, you know, it'll be like a 30, 30-person workshop. And, uh, it's a, a full day, you'll use all our GAS information, all of our maps, and it'll, it'll work out to the benefit of the town, and this might, instead of wasting the 175, I'm not saying wasting, but instead of using the 175 on just, you know, on a study, this will cut, we'll be able to do the study with this. So I just want to say thank you to the committee, we're meeting tomorrow night, and, um, this might help us, Richie, with Tudor Beach, uh, you know, the plant, it's a, it's a big planning system, so. And I'll let you know, I'll let everybody know, uh, how we make out tomorrow, tomorrow night, uh, who we're going to hire for the MVP, uh, uh, administration companies. And that's it, that's all I have to say.
That's terrific. Closing announcements? I have one here that, uh, Mr. Perry had given us, that, um, Edward Peterson, Edwin Peterson, Eddie Peterson has been, um, appointed to the Golf Course Committee, effective immediately.
He was on the list that you gave us.
So I just wanted everyone to know. Congrats, Mr. Peterson.
That's good.
Any other announcements? Motion adjourned?
When's our next meeting?
Uh, Mr., uh, one more thing, Mr. Chairman, actually, the summer schedule, absent any executive sessions or whatever else the chair decides to work with the rest of the other two of you on, and I will certainly communicate your wishes, and we'll try to coordinate that. But the summer schedule, uh, is the following, uh, we're hoping to meet two weeks from tonight, on the 20, Wednesday, the 27th. That is the night, there are at least two things that have to be addressed that are pretty important, there could be others, I don't know yet, but, uh, we have to sign off on the borrowing for the storm damage of about 1.6 million, I'll have the paperwork ready to go. And it's my hope that, uh, Mr. Manning is going to come in with finalists to the board of selectmen for you now, new town administrator. Um, we will then, I, I forward to all three of you again, uh, town council's opinion, it's, uh, we're going to set up, uh, an interview process on Saturday morning, July 7th, right after the 4th of July, at, uh, the time and convenience for the board, obviously, to meet here. It won't be an open meeting, it will separate you, you'll go in separate rooms. I will quarterback moving the finalists to each one of you. Uh, I guess my quick question is, uh, how much time would you like with each candidate? Half hour, 40, you tell, give me some sense what you'd like, and I'll coordinate everything. Um, I would suggest a half hour, but if you want more, that's fine, too, you know, with each person. Um, half hour work?
Half hour, fine with me.
Okay, I mean, if we have to run over, we'll, we'll work it out, so I'll coordinate that, and then.
Hold on a second.
I'm sorry.
Time-wise?
Yeah.
First of all, each of you are aware of this, that we're going to meet on Saturday morning, July?
7th.
7th. Separate rooms.
I told everybody to.
You, you have a talk for the last, for the last meeting.
Yeah.
We're all going to, okay.
Okay, so.
Is that okay, is that okay with everybody else? I mean.
Well, I just, I, I've heard no negative feedback.
That's fine with me, I just want to make sure we get a copy of the resume.
Oh, go, 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 yeah, oh, you, oh, you'll have everything.
That's a good point, I was.
You'll have a packet for each individual in advance of July, I'll get that to you, you can read them well before the 7th. We'll have the packet hopefully June 27th.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, we'll have that.
The other question they have, are you going to have a background check on those top three?
No, no, it's too expensive, that's not the custom. If you select a candidate, which is your ultimate goal, we, I have established a process with, uh, Chief Dwyer, where we'll do a background investigation on your candidate you select. If the candidate doesn't cut it, then we'll have to circle the wagons and figure out what you want to do again. But you don't do background checks on all three, you only do it on the, the, the one you select, and they'll be vetted properly. That's the traditional way it occurs, so we'll do half hours for now, but obviously, you know, we do that, we'll put my office and the selectmen's office, and the Selectmen's office, and the town clerk's office will set that up for each three of you there, and they'll rotate around.
How is your office?
You, I'll leave that to the three of you to figure that out. And then what will happen after that is, I will be scheduling public interviews on July 11th, Wednesday, July 11th, the week after that, Saturday, where you do, you'll be second interview in a public environment for the citizens to watch, and then what I also planning on doing is on July 12th, posting a meeting, if you, as the board so desire, you want to sleep on it for 24 hours to come back. But if you want to make the choice that night, certainly it will be your prerogative, it's your decision totally. So that's the game plan, I've...
Just give us a timetable.
I've got that, yep, that, just, yep.
The rest of June, July, and August?
Yeah, and then the only other meeting I got scheduled is August 8th, like a summer schedule, other than, I don't know what's gonna happen, this conversation, as Richie indicated, whether it's a special town meeting, I don't, that's your decision, and I don't have anything to report on that yet, but if something comes up, certainly I will share that with all of you.
You might want to, if we're gonna have one, or possibly have one, I'd have the town clerk prepare for it, and have her give us some dates, whether it's a Saturday or a Monday night, and depending on who's presenting the petition for the town meeting, when they, they would like it.
Yeah, I, I'll be frank with you, I haven't got that far with it.
No, 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 I understand, but I mean, in other...
At this point, the agreement, the agreement I had with, I believe, all three of you, in my dialogue with you when I briefed you individually, was we were gonna wait to see if there were various boards and committees, see how they felt about it, and then report back. I know the finance committee has not even had an opportunity to meet on this yet, and so it's premature. The only reason I raise this, not to have a dialogue about a special town meeting, is to have a dialogue about your schedule.
You might, you might want to have your staff have a listing, a recap from the town clerk, and then a recommendation...
I will work on all that, yes.
Of all the committees that have to vote.
Well, right now, I think, I don't think tonight's the night for that conversation, but I will take care of that.
I don't know how many, I don't know, you need a, but the finance committee?
Well, certainly, I think we'd agree on the finance committee, but...
No, but I mean, for a recommendation for a special town meeting?
I got it, yep.
Check off, that's a check off.
Back, back to Town Administrator, though. Jen?
Jen McCarthy, I am on the Town Administrator Committee search this time, and I do not speak for the committee right now, I'm speaking as myself, as a person on the committee. We are planning on interviewing on the 23rd, and so I'm just concerned if you wait till July 7th to start your process, that that's 12 days in between, and I know we do have the holiday, but we've already lost some candidates to other cities and towns because of our timeline. And I'm just very concerned with the applicants that we have, that we possibly could lose some more good applicants in that 12 days. And so I just would like you to take that into consideration as you think about this timeline, because there's a lot of towns looking, and people are going fast.
Thank you. Good point.
What is that, June what? Want to move it up?
Is it, is, have you checked with the chairman?
What?
The chairman, what does he think?
We are planning, we are proposing. We are planning on meeting on the 23rd, I would assume, that's a Saturday, I would assume by Monday, the 25th, we will be forwarding to you, hopefully, we, we have to forward at least three names. So hopefully, we're gonna be able to come to you on the 25th, or through Mr. Perry, let him know that we do have a final three, four, five, whatever. So there is Saturday, the 30th, I don't know what your timeframe is, but...
I, if I could report, please, I appreciate Jen's comments, I discussed this with both the chair and the vice chair of the search committee, the time, schedule, while I do agree, you always run the risk of losing candidates, but the chair and the vice chair told me they were comfortable with the schedule, so I don't, you know, I don't know what else to say. It is the difficult time you're going through with the 4th of July in the middle of all this. I thought the schedule worked about as good as it could, given what's going on, but if it's the wishes of the board to accelerate it, just tell me what you want to do, we'll do it.
I think we keep, keep it as it is, and will the board, all three of us be ready to vote on Wednesday, the 11th?
I would hope you would be.
I'm asking each of the board members. We will have the Saturday, we will have the resumes, we will have all the interviews done.
If we're happy with it, sure.
If we're happy with them, why not?
Fine with me.
Well, so we have that one meeting that week, the 11th.
You're gonna, that's a regular scheduled meeting?
Yes. That will be the meeting for the month.
The 11th.
The 11th. We vote with the Town Administrator, and the...
We're gonna, we're gonna...
Mr. Perry, then, does his thing with the police, and does the background check.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote for one, or one, two, three? How we're gonna vote, sequence?
No, you'll, you'll have three candidates, let's say they bring three, we don't know how many they're gonna bring yet, but let's say hypothetically it's three candidates, on July 7th, you'll interview all three of them. Then on, on July 11th, in a public environment, you'll interview them a second time, and then after you, that will be two interviews, one, one-on-one, one in a public environment, and then at that point, it's the pleasure of the board to select one of the three candidates for your next town administrator. If you select a person, as Mr. Taylor has indicated he'd like to do on July 11th, then I will then proceed with a background investigation of that candidate that you three have selected, and it would be my goal to get that completed, and a negotiated contract for your signature on August 8th, which will be the next time in your summer schedule that you will vote, and then hopefully get the candidate in here around Labor Day. That's the plan. We'll see how it goes.
You don't think that in, in between the 11th and August 8th, you won't need to have another meeting?
Oh, it's, it's...
You need to iron the contract, though. Look at the contract, too.
Obviously, what I will, what traditionally occurs, as I understand it, is your town administrator doesn't go, unless when you want to do it, that's fine with me, but the town administrator will negotiate the contract, and then I will give you, you know, copies of, you know, a tentative agreement, subject to your approval, and that will be hopefully signed on August 8th by the board.
I would suggest Popeye and Page draw the contract.
Oh, that's fine, I have no problem with that. I mean, I'll do the negotiations, then they'll do the drafting of, of the language, yeah, absolutely, of course, yeah, it's gotta be town council doing it, and I agree with that.
I thought we were gonna use attorney Chris Durkis for that.
For, to draw the contract?
Well, he drew up, he, he went through, and the problems with the existing contract we had with our current, past town administrator.
I will select any attorney, yeah, I'm fine with me, doesn't matter to me.
He wrote up the...
I'm aware of his work, yeah.
Well, he was the one that drew up the...
Do you want, Mr.?
The surrounding towns' contracts, and, and the actual law.
So who do you want, Phil?
It doesn't matter.
We, we, we had a problem, and...
It's defined by me.
We had a problem.
Did we decide that night, the 12th?
Well, no, we should decide now, or give him a name or something, and, and because, and, well, the other thing, I think we need a, a, a primary town administrator, and a second, just in case something happens, the first one.
I would, no, you, you, this is, these are your options, I don't think you can have a number two, that's not fit of the candidate. What you, what, from my experience in almost every community I've ever been involved with, you pick a candidate. Now, if for some reason it doesn't make it, the board can come back and select one of the other ones, if that's your, you know, I mean, you know, if, you know, you could lose them, some of this is, you're rolling the dice, I can't deny, Jen's comments are true, you do run the risk, it's just, you can't stop this process. It's a very hot economy, it's very difficult to get qualified people, I don't dispute that, I can, I'm assuming they're having a challenge down there to get good candidates, but I, I don't think you can have a number two person, I would strongly advise you not to do that. Select a candidate, let's proceed with that candidate, and I think this town's even had some prior experiences, the same thing where you selected a candidate, and it didn't happen, you went to another candidate.
So the search committee is gonna recommend three candidates?
I don't know what they're gonna recommend.
X amount.
We have to recommend at least three, that's what we asked.
You're not gonna number those candidates, are you?
No. And you'll, you'll never say they will be presented to you in no random, no...
They're usually presented alphabetically.
Yes.
I did four committees, so that's...
The only thing I'm hoping, which is a little different, I think, from the past, is this, and, and Enzo and I talked about it, and I, and I agree with him on it, the opportunity to meet one-on-one, I think, you know, just, you know, not, you know, just, you know, sitting in an office, like a normal public sector interview, if you will, gives you hopefully a better feel for the candidate, because it's very difficult, obviously, I think we all agree, to interview in a public environment, it, it's a little bit more challenging. So you're really gonna get a great chance, in my opinion, to do two interviews, and then at that point, you have to, you know, it's what, you get paid big bucks to make decisions.
Are these candidates...
The last, the last one I, last committee I was, I was on the superintendent's committee. We picked Tony, then there was another guy, and Tony, we, we weren't sure that he was gonna take the job, the school committee wasn't.
Yep.
But he wanted taking it, but the other guy would have been next in line.
Okay.
So we, we did number him, one, two, and three.
If, if that's what you want to do, that's fine, I mean, I, I only suggest what you do, but if that's what you want to do, go ahead.
We have, we will have three candidates that are, let's say, we will have three candidates, let's pick three. In a way, yes, Richie, but if one, if number one we pick falls out, we will go to the next two.
That's what happened last time.
And I want to remind, these names, and the committee, too, this has to be very confidential, and kept confidential.
Once they become to us, they're public.
Well...
I know that.
Not till we have to...
Yes.
They are public, once, even, yeah.
Once they release...
Once they release the names to the Selectmen, they're public.
Up until that point, it's confidential.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify for Mr. Lombard? Last time, we had a candidate that when we interviewed him, he had not entered into contract negotiations with another town. By the time he entered in with you, he had met with the other town and was about ready, and that is why we chose a number two also last time, because we said, wait a minute, when we met with you, you were free, and now you're clearly, we think, taken. So the board at that point said, well, we will choose number one and number two, and that's why we did that last time.
One candidate played us...
Yes.
Against another community.
Yes.
And he swore up and down that he would take our job, the current salary...
And he didn't.
And not go with that other community, and it was, it was...
Yes.
Very, very disheartening, and very dishonest, I'll be honest with you.
Thank you.
Did you, Jen, did you get a farm to fill out for your boat?
Scott fixed it, so we're okay, but I would be concerned about other boats and trailers.
Do you, you want to advise me an attorney?
I know.
I'm, I'm looking for an answer.
Well, let these two decide.
Why don't you, why don't you just, I mean, you can run it by Chris, I guess.